The agenda, um, item number eleven is being removed because we don't have that final information from the construction. Have you changed this on the agenda, Michelle?
Items twelve and thirteen would be resolutions.
They're considered, the approval would be resolution. Any other change? I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I would also approve the agenda, striking item eleven and making sure that items twelve and thirteen are resolutions.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion right now? Here in all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye? There we go. Um, item number three is a public forum, an opportunity for the public to talk. You three are here for the agenda items, so presume that's okay? You don't feel anything else on the public forum? Okay? All right, move on to item number four, the consent agenda. I just had a motion, will see what's presently up together to regular.
The claims are in the back and then the pink sheet are district claims also.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Actually, I might have to do it out. Okay? For financials, we have to pull the claims off. Okay, so the consent agenda just consists of approval of minutes from the last parade of new. I entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Second one.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say aye? All right, approval of claims and pre-offers claims. Discussion on any questions? How do you know we had any involvement in the parade of new cemetery?
Um, we pay them five thousand dollars annually for past forty years.
I look back, I can't find it anyplace. It's in the claims here.
I can show it, I can pull it up on the software.
I would like, I would like to see it sometime.
And there's no agreement yet, do you?
Um, Amy Fred, I talked to her when I went with Ryan to the township meeting. And she was going to look into it and she found it and she talked to Maureen at, um, Maureen Thompson of the forecourt. And she said as far as she knew, it's been that way since she's been there and that's forty-four years.
I just didn't remember it ever, either.
So it's a township operated cemetery and the townships and the city pays for maintenance? So the city pays something for maintenance?
So they pay the same amount we did, the township does, or what?
The township pays us over seventeen thousand and then we pay them five thousand for maintenance.
We use that township dollars for equipment and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Unless you have a cemetery.
And what?
Unless the township has a cemetery.
The township does. Is that in an ordinance there or something?
When the township, uh, has money out of the, so Union Township has a cemetery. There's other townships that do not. So they have to have money out of the township to pay for maintenance on the cemetery.
Right, the money we're talking about is the money that's five thousand for fire protection. So if the mystery is where there's five thousand.
Right.
So do the other townships that don't have a cemetery, do they get less than us or that we all get equal distributions? Do you know? Maybe Ryan, maybe.
What, because of what are you asking? Like the rate we charge?
Well, like you said, you got, we get seventeen thousand from the township.
But that has nothing to do with cemetery.
Oh, I thought five thousand came out of that money.
No. So the townships pay to the city for fire protection. The city, a totally separate transaction, if I understand, the city pays the cemetery five thousand dollars a year. Because it's a township cemetery that the city utilizes that and that helps go towards the cemetery's maintenance separately from fire protection. Is that? So he talked to somebody about it. I only, I only know that because I've heard talk of the township payments to Palina for the, I'm not talking about five thousand percent. I've only heard, overheard discussion over the last few years of what does the township all pay to do and what do they do? But I know the township, you and township would like to get compensation from other townships for the usage of the cemetery as well, but I don't think they do.
I did not know that exists. Because you used to do the graves and you don't do any of it. They hire somebody, right?
But you're sure that you pay a new?
Oh, I can pull it up, I can.
Yeah, that's a yearly thing.
Five thousand dollars.
At one point, I heard what all that was about.
I just don't remember if it's CNN or our claims, but I thought it just listed.
Because I know that went along with the city digging all the graves.
Right, and then that's been stopped for the last thirty years.
So technically, we are costing the cemetery by down because we just still pay the dollars, but we're gonna provide time digging graves. They harder, they harder gotten from a grave, like some things. Is it something everybody wants to pursue or just let it continue? What's your pleasure, council?
My job.
Okay, moving on. Ready for your presentation?
Yes, thank you, thank you for talking.
So it's a runway down at the airport, is that what I know? Ryan? Is this the road?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
A question about the pink.
So I would entertain a motion for approval of claims and pre offers claims. I'll second that and I'm glad the engineer asked for the news and for the search. You said a second, did somebody make a motion?
Somebody should make their motion.
So would you make a motion for approval?
We can discuss it.
I can't do both? Okay, so Danny, you made a motion?
Sure.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion or questions?
So are we paying that full amount of payment per settlement at one sixty-eight? Did you get highlighted there?
That's the first payment.
What's that? Turn the second out himself.
What's that?
Turn the second.
Second is?
Is that the first? First payment? Oh, yeah. What payment is, um?
All right, any other questions? Or are you? Are they all, all those in favor of approval of the claims signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed say aye? There we go. Item number five, Michelle.
Okay, some city announcements. Um, there's a question on whose responsibility it is to turn the trees over the streets and over the sidewalk. It is the owner's responsibility, the owner of the building property, it's not the city's.
So don't we just have that discussion not that long ago about that? And it's the homeowners above the sidewalks and then the cities above the streets, no?
The ordinance actually says homeowner above.
Like you said, this is in the parking ordinance? So it's fifteen, it's fifteen feet above the, the street and eight above sidewalk.
As a council, you can always make changes into the ordinance if that's a ordinance.
Mostly just really need to enforce it then because it's getting really bad.
They need to be called, you know, and that, if they didn't know what that they are in charge.
So is that like the same thing, it's like some alley who's gonna?
Property owners, you know? Which one, who's on the site it's on?
Mm-hmm.
And I actually thought I would put another one on there.
Okay, you did.
Um. Yeah, just remind residents that it is illegal, or it's against city ordinance, not illegal. It's against city ordinance to feed stray cats. There are more complaints.
And also, it's against city ordinance for the cats to run at large. And also.
I would prevent a cat from running at large.
We're just stating what the ordinance says.
Then I'm breaking laws. So would they all be better if they want to let them run, have a collar on? I mean, does it say anything about collars on? The cat has to have a collar if it goes outside, but it still needs to be. Tell them a leash. That ought to be fun.
I want to see you up here.
Oh, yeah, me too. They won't come back, Jean. Yeah, I'll give you a call.
They won't come back.
I'm gonna come and take pictures.
So going back to the other county, just real quick, uh, so the homeowner is now responsible for the center line of the street? Always has. Since at least twenty-sixteen hours, it's sort of, it's the ordinance.
What did you, said that ordinance was like in the, when they were talking about, what do you talk about, street parking?
Street parking.
The tracing street parking.
You printed it off, right?
That was the wrong one.
Why?
That was tree, that was street parking.
Well, I thought it said about street parking a part of it. I don't, I can't find it, I must have left it at home. Because you printed it off with two sheets.
So then you need to go around and start marking, would you?
Chances are the homeowner doesn't really.
I'd say not.
Doesn't make sense, I mean, it's our ordinance, so we have to force ordinance or change our ordinance. Does it make sense that a homeowner is responsible for putting trees clear with a big tree pole or something? Or do cities typically do something like that? Or is there such a typical, because you know, a council could change our ordinance and you think it's unreasonable for a resident to clear trees above the, above the street with a big?
I know, I know, it said it in which.
I want to say one time that this has been, and it was just kind of the city decided to do it as a courtesy. For that reason.
Right. The tree, one day it turns over the street and, yeah, the entire time it said that it's supposed to, but we just do it because it wasn't getting burned.
Myos and buses were hit down by Zion coming up Main Street on New, on New Christian last year.
Well, Dana, they're down with the catapult and they knocked out a bunch of his lights. He was on Main Street to the elevator, so.
Down the truck.
Yeah.
I'm just supposed to stay in the truck route.
Yeah, well, that is a truck route.
Main Street?
Down Main Street.
Is it?
To the elevator.
Oh. Oh, sure. I guess my concern is this is having my homeowners on a ladder trying to dip fifteen feet above the end of the, cutting the fence down. Where eight foot on the side one.
Yeah, it would be a safety, it would be a safety concern, I would think.
They'd have to hire a gun, I think. There's no way they would do it.
So then, would, if that becomes the city responsibility?
It's like they, they.
Pay the city? I mean, how, how is that?
So, um, your departments.
I can sort of call around other cities and see what.
That would be good, yeah.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
We have time about email. Probably not this week, but next week, yeah.
May I talk about legal complications?
Yeah, you need to send out an email, I can talk to Tish first and then send an email. Unless she says there's nothing. Yeah, someone will get you.
Okay, so, future of item. All right. Item number six, installation of distribution conduit feeder cables from the new substation switch gear. We announced a public hearing tonight. I will open that public hearing. Did you receive any? Is it in the general comments, city? There's nobody here to speak to that. So council has any comments? Typically, it's just to hear from the public, so nobody here. Entertain a motion, a resolution to close the public hearing. Second?
I'll second.
So is this what we're calling switch gear for need? This is previous news. Michelle, do you want to vote for this?
Steve Herring?
Aye.
Carol Hongkum?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Jean O'Gra?
Aye.
Any workmaster?
Aye. All in all, vote, all ayes, the public hearing is closed. So I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution to award bid for installation of distribution conduit feeder cables from the new substation switch gear. Motion, second, for discussing.
Mark, is this residential?
So this is, that, and that, that's considerably less than what they were considering.
Oh, yeah. Seam glass, dollars and two.
They signed a B.
Two fifty?
Okay.
So this is going to be inside the one point five million. Correct. The two fifty was part of the one point five, one point six.
Now we can count about a hundred more.
Offered us a resolution exception to the recommendation awarding, uh, Selenic electric. The contractor for installation of distribution conduit and feeder cables from the new substation switch gear in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six, six hundred and seventy-six, fifty cents.
Excuse me, a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. So Kelly, if you could just make sure that they know this is the holes across the streets and underground.
Yeah, the poles across the street are gonna be taken down and everything's getting, all the feeders are getting spread out so they're not all in one area.
Are they working on that now already? No, but, okay, I just seen a truck over there.
Yes, Harold Schultz.
That's the, that's the. Switch gears for the distribution.
Okay.
But a big, a free pole where all our distribution goes now, it's gonna be gone.
So that would be a box.
There'll be boxes there, there'll be boxes down on the elevator property somewhere, and there'll be some over on the north side of the elevator.
So the truck traffic over there, the poles are very visible, will the boxes be detected so they'll get back into it and all things?
So plus a thing.
Okay, any other questions on the motion? Can I answer the votes?
Steve Herring?
Aye.
Carol Hongkum?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Jean O'Gra?
Aye.
Any workmaster?
Aye. All right, thank you. Um, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the vacated portion of the South Cannon Street, the South Grand Canyon School District. I will open the public hearing. And nobody here to speak to that, so input yourself?
No.
All right, so we entertain a motion, a second, to close the public hearing.
I would like to motion to close the public hearing. One second. Any workmaster?
Here, aye.
Jean O'Gra?
Yeah, I mean, aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Carol Hongkum? Steve Herring?
Aye. This public hearing is closed. So that, this is resolution. Do you have a minute for this? On the table, it'll be in the packet, but not the final file.
Yeah, I got the title, received the final from Tish this morning.
It's on the table. So we entertain a motion to approve that resolution, the vacated and dispossessed public street. So move. Second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
We really agree that, at least read the, be it resolved portion of the resolutions or?
Definitely, to do that, who is the, let's see, do you want to read that, that motion here? Perhaps we read the.
You know, on the back, just read the.
We need to resolve that above the straight portion of South Cannon Street, the vacated and said property be conveyed by quick funding in South Grand Canyon School District upon the condition separate and solid and resolution previously adopted by the council and that the mayor and city clerk, however authorized, be directed to execute the order of quick funding to the property of South Grand Canyon School District. So that's part of the motion, so we're still okay with it.
Yes, I'll stay at present.
Any other discussion?
This is, I drove by and this, this is just portion on the west side of that building that's bumped out onto city property. It doesn't actually go into the street. It's just on the right.
The street, it's the street right away owned by the city.
And it's just a small portion of that building that.
Correct. Supposedly that building additions from early eighties.
And? So then, the way I understand this, uh, if the school removes that building or no longer has that building and reverses, that, they revert back to the city. The way that.
The act, I didn't click that the last.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions? Move to a second, shall we, the roll call vote?
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Jean O'Gra?
Aye.
Carol Hongkum?
Aye.
Any workmaster?
Aye.
Steve Herring?
Aye.
All ayes, no two answers. Okay. Item number eight, resolution approved Brian Falcone as airport manager. We approve that, but not as a resolution, we approve the grade necessarily. So I would entertain that all the resolutions sitting here. I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll present that resolution to hire candidate Brian Falcone to the position of airport manager for the salary of five thousand dollars per fiscal year. Also as compensation for work completed and not listed in the Palina Airport Manager job description and responsibilities. Manager shall receive fifty dollars per hour of bonus. Being resolved by the council of the city of Palina to approve the hiring of Brian Falcone to the position of airport manager for the salary of five thousand dollars per fiscal year. Also as compensation for work completed and not listed in the Palina Airport Manager job description and responsibilities. Manager shall receive fifty dollars per hour of bonus.
So a motion, a second? Any questions or discussion? Aye. Any questions or discussion? Question I put, council, is that additional work that's not in the job description issue? Who authorizes that? Does that have to be pre-authorized by the city or does the airport manager get to decide additional work needed?
We discussed that. I would think it would have to be approved by the city. I would think so. Would the access have to come in?
For work completely not listed and approved by the city?
Not saying that it could happen, but it could. Not to lie. You didn't think it would probably happen, but you never know. Kendall, so, Kendall, do we need to put approved by the city in there? No.
I think we could, but that's, it isn't just a content, I guess, it's just a pretty, pretty. Any other resolution?
I don't know.
I don't care.
We're okay. With the being amended, we can. So somebody makes, somebody would have to make a motion to amend it. This is a resolution to put in that. Approval of work outside of the job description.
I'll make a motion to. Anything extra has to be approved by council.
Just out of curiosity, we need to table this thing until next week, so Jean, I could talk with her. I'm sure it's not worth the language. So kind of even in the dark.
Yeah, I don't see any of this, I, right, that's been.
So I would motion, we do that motion to table this issue until next, contemplating which is longest, once you win. So we'll be looking at it.
You're looking at the resolution, I have to.
I might have to table it.
Okay, oh, okay.
So we're looking at the motion to table. Let's see, is that a vote or a second, is that a second? Somebody want to take a second, do the motion to table?
I'll second.
All in favor of tailoring the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed say aye? Very well, ayes. Okay. So table that and change. So table that, and change the voting accordingly. Item number nine, consider resolution twenty Maureen Thompson as city treasurer, entertain a motion.
I'm gonna change that.
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. We've got the resolution, you packet.
I'll second.
Three, three resolved.
Do you agree that it was resolved on the last project?
What'd you say?
To be resolved.
Yeah, be it resolved by the council of the city of Palina to prove the appointment of Maureen Thompson as city treasurer to be compensated at a rate approved by the council of the city of Palina for the city of Palina.
So we have a motion in a second.
Carol, yeah, from me and Nicole.
We don't put a rate in that resolution.
She never did say anything, you said. She just says, maybe, she. I think part of it is she has no problem it's gonna take her, for one bite.
So you, you made a motion to approve her, the resolution has a rate.
Mileage.
A rate and mileage, so we should put that rate in, and the motion, that's resolution.
What? Was it before, I mean, our treasurer? What'd you find, is it six hundred, was it six hundred per year, or per fiscal year, or was it six hundred per half a year?
I'm not sure. Another six hundred dollars. I would say a few.
How many?
I think it was one.
Sure. We don't know. What are your thoughts for sure?
What would you like to propose as part of your resolution? Motion for this resolution? Do you want, is that a hundred dollars a month, when it's fully listed? What for a year? Six hundred per?
With Maureen, with her background, her experience, there's, you know, there's, there's a lot of areas that she can, types of hopeless stuff.
And all she can add is right.
Alan saw yours, so she can do all of that.
I'll probably, how to report the bond, even, I don't know, she's always well, she's all.
Have you talked to any other towns about, that they can, yeah, I mean, just keep it for these seven months? We don't want to. Alex did reach out to them, so, then they're saying, quit as a treasurer, which I think we want is doing part of this.
From those doing the same thing, I don't know if they still are, but they used to, they did it by the council of mayor.
Yeah, I would, I would want a motion to do that, but it's, we have some separation.
I think Maureen will be great at it, she's got a lot of years behind her from the courthouse, and so, I don't know.
So, is a hundred dollars a month?
I think that's it.
Or, maybe pay more?
That'd be five dollars a month.
We don't have any idea, she's not done it yet.
Have you talked to her about what she's looking for?
She has, she has.
Or get a dollar a month, because she's charging a hundred dollars.
Right. Okay, do you want to do her like a flat fee, like twenty-five to thirty dollars per hour? I don't know. Well, like you said, this morning when we talked, we're already paying our cleaning lady twenty bucks an hour, so I think she needs twenty plus.
Oh, absolutely.
So, maybe we want to try and start at twenty-five?
I would, I would go for a monthly rate, regardless, I, I would bear, so, I recommend.
Instead of per hour?
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I agree with the monthly rate.
Just, is it like a hundred dollars a month?
I don't have a good idea.
I don't know. Infer her to get us where we need to be, and consistently, and all of that, I.
Well, I consider, new that person was something else, she's gonna help with that, but.
I don't know.
You always change it down, you just can always change it down low.
As long as we find out how it's looking for you guys and for her. Well, I'm gonna suggest twenty-five dollars an hour at least, discover that, that would be my thought, something less.
So you want to be twelve dollars versus just pay the children a hundred, like, do your job.
Yeah. Yes. I think you should keep her per hour.
You know, one thing, it's very hard to handle.
That's right, yeah, with the experience that she has behind her.
We want to be scared.
Right, we don't want to look at you.
Even though twenty-five an hour, though, is, I think that almost seems like it's too low, though. I mean, we're paying our cleaning person one, one hundred dollars a hour.
No, I consider thirty.
I picked a hundred, I'm telling you, so she can give them to an hour or two.
She's so bad. She said, but what if one month you, yeah. I just can't see her doing it that fast, not the first one, I think, though.
Makes sense.
There's too much.
I was gonna say two hundred is fine.
Should we put it on the show?
She's gonna make it work. Yeah, I, I mean, that's not, that's not.
Well, like you tell me as, as well as work.
Yeah, right. Two hundred a month? Two hundred?
Two hundred a month? I mean, it's, really, it's a professional.
To the work.
If you are willing to kind of do it, it'll be, you know, a day, an hour and a half or so.
Right, yeah.
So.
So do, do we need to go back and say this again, then, with the?
You don't go back and redo your motion, you have to say the whereas, as well as the be resolved?
And it's two hundred, Maureen siding, per month?
You, you, you can make the motion again.
Okay, well, I make sure that's what, we're not gonna redo the.
Sounds like it. Yeah, ideally, we went green in the class of business, whereas, senior, junior. You know.
I know, but she's excited, but she doesn't know either.
Michelle, Michelle.
I think you can always revisit this later on, too, after she's.
I think, I think she'll be okay. So we, so we, a hundred, and if she sees this morning, you can come back to the. Okay, I'll, I'm adding a motion to, whereas council of the city of Palina.
Just don't amend it, just say, do, do the state motion.
Okay, I'm going to redo my motion for, whereas council of the city of Palina of Iowa approves to be compensated at a rate of two hundred per month, along with a payment of sixty-seven cents per mile traveled to complete the duties outlined in this resolution. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Palina, Iowa, including the appointment of Maureen as city treasurer to be compensated at a rate approved by the council of the city of Palina for the city of Palina, Iowa.
We got a motion, hold on a second.
Twenty seconds.
Any other discussion?
So Maureen is aware of that we're gonna vote on, on the message?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
And she knows she's down for two years.
I believe so, yes. I haven't heard of it, but.
Alright, do you read a vote, um, Michelle, what happens?
Steve Herron?
Aye.
Carol Hahnke?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Gina Drow?
Aye.
Danny Rupster?
Aye.
Motion passes with all ayes and real, possible. So we've got. Let's see, would council be okay if we would change the order of the agenda to go to the garbage service discussion next?
Yes, good, yes.
So it's definitely not to wait through any more of our administrator type things?
Look like you're enjoying it.
That's a lot, honestly, it's not, the castling, though, you've kind of got mail to catch. Our city's last council meeting was chickens.
Ah, we've done one of those, we've done chickens before.
Of no roosters.
Yeah, yeah, we've got that too. I think only five, though.
Alright. So we'll go to item number fourteen on our agenda, Michelle, do you want to introduce them, or how should we approach this?
Yeah, um.
How did you get here?
Yeah, we got here because, uh, we had some yardages that hadn't been built since September twenty twenty-two. So we figured out these yardages, and we sent the bills to every, to, um, our commercial customers. Many of them did not realize that they were paying for extra yardage, and some of that might happen. Um, one business, what's in the dumpster is basically paper. And if it's, if the door's open a little bit, they're charged for extra yardage. It goes by quantity, not rate. So you could have garbage bags full of styrofoam, and garbage bags full of lead, and you're charged the same. And we're gonna have to, um, revisit that, and I called Pringgar to see how they did commercial, and they, um, use, well, they only do residential, they don't build like commercial customers. Uh, Pringgar uses OC sanitation, and they each business contracts with OC sanitation for each, for their individual needs, instead of the way that it's being done now. Where it's a user lose it, or, yeah. So that's how we got here, and Brad was willing to come talk to us, and.
Did you say in that town, and you said that we don't want to?
Yeah, Town and Country services twenty-eight towns, and we are only two that build yardage. So why didn't they tell, tell us that you?
I think it was, they, that we decided whoever could do it this way.
Why? It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't Town and, it wasn't Town and Country that made the decision to charge us.
Hmm, okay.
So, it was your what?
It was not.
It was directly ordered by Palina to Brown. Or you go.
Yeah.
So I think what you're saying, most, most towns do the residential, and have the businesses contract for their own needs, right?
Right, which is one of the strengths. Alright, so Brad, what is your last name?
Oh, William, my name is Brad, the president of the company.
And this with you?
Uh, this is my son, Hunter, and my son, Jeff, and they're both, uh, employees and owners of the company. And also, my, my wife works for the company, and my, you know, the daughter does as well.
And Justin, what's your last name?
We're laying out all the, oh, the man calls me, you can spell. V A N K A L S B E E K. So I don't know how long we've been doing this, or the company you're with, but. Has, have you ever had an owner sitting in the chair here that's a company you're doing business with?
Probably before they got.
I don't know.
So they're not since friends and, or.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, at the time, he became the postman, I think, I was, was interested in purchasing this company, and I wish I would, I, I've always wished I would have done that to have Palina as, as a customer. And I, I'd like to have Palina as a customer, I wish there was somebody that could give Palina as a customer. Um, I think as part of, for your city doing the building, the commercial, I think you'd be better off walking away from that. I think doing the residential commercial is a good idea, and actually, a lot of my cities are between a dollar fifty and two dollars for doing the building for a commer, for a residential. And, uh, so then the city gets two dollars per customer per month, so it'd be a five hundred dollar. Your city should. You know, and that's a lot easier, not having to deal with the, with the school, or the gas station, or whoever, figure out how much they have, what they should charge. That should be up to the holder, and, and this is.
So you do it directly on whoever?
Yeah, sure, yeah. And, uh, she, I gave her just kind of a little idea of what we charge, and we're double what you're at right now.
For commercial?
Yes, for commercial. But, you know, I have, I'm figuring the tonnage, and, and also I'm figuring in the cost of the dumpster, when I give somebody a price, that's dumpster included. So if somebody owns dumpster, they can, they can save themselves ten to fifteen dollars on the dumpster. But also, if I'm correct, I don't think you folks have increased your cost per commercial since two thousand seventeen. If that's correct, two thousand seventeen, we all know what's happened since two thousand seventeen, I mean, the landfill just went up another two dollars, I think, since two thousand seventeen, they've probably gone up. In the seventies and thirties, last three years. Yeah, I think it was seven dollars in just the last, uh, two or three years alone, so, uh, went from thirty-five to forty-two, so that makes a difference in size. You know, for example, uh, a rural customer that I pick up once a month with a yard and a half, I figure that's about four, four or five hundred pounds a month. So let's just take, uh, somebody that has a yard and a half a town here, let's pick up once a week, and let's just take two hundred and fifty pounds a week, and I pick them up four times a month, that's a thousand, a thousand pounds, which is twenty-one dollars in tons alone. Then I'm gonna send a truck there every week, so, can I send a, a driver there with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck, and pay fuel and wages, and send them in for ten dollars a week to empty that dumpster? No way. Can't, you just can't do it, it, it doesn't work. So, um, when you look at the price I charge, even with that, it takes a lot of numbers to make that work. Even that, a number of things have just gotten. Uh, you see inflation, you don't always see it at the grocery store, a lot of times you just see it at utilities, and I'm sure you folks have seen that with, with things in town, with gas, electric, and everything, it's just, it's just drawn up. So, uh, I would be willing to lower my, try to lower my commercial ways, if that sort of took, uh, paying Palina as a customer, and slowly work the commercial up to where they should be in, in, in years. I sent her a couple different contracts, I sent her Bringard and Boyd. Bringard was a five-year contract, was a three-year contract, was a two-year extension, and then an increase. Uh, Boyd, it's, uh, it's kind of a running contract, and I give a three percent per year increase. And, uh, if you look at the figures, I actually like the Boyd one better, because I don't have to come in here and deal with different people every two to three years. Um, it just, it just keeps going, if you look at the cost right now, Bringard is at eighteen oh five, and Boyd is at seventeen forty-nine. So Boyd is actually less, but I would take the less money than have to go to council meetings on the planet. I mean, I like, I just, I, I assure you all, you know, but, uh, but no, that's one thing you'll get with our company, it's a family-owned company, I've been doing it my whole life, my father did it before me, and, uh, my son and son-in-law do it after me. And, uh, they're not just owners, they're employees, they drive trucks. If, uh, automated drivers missing Justin, if I, if, uh, wheel drive drivers missing London, they're getting a truck. And maybe you can get lucky enough to see meet somebody in a truck, I still, I still get in a truck, I was in a truck this morning again. So, uh, I, I, I don't know how better I can sell myself, and sell ourselves to the company.
I have a question for you, um, do you do all the payments to the landfill?
Yeah.
You do that, so, like, now they get a pay, or they get a check, a bill from the landfill?
Yep.
Plus from, um, Town and Country?
Yep.
And also, you get a, um, recycling charge, too, don't you?
It's all that, land.
The landfill is recycling with that, okay.
Yeah, and that's another thing, landfill used to be no cost, and now it's, it's, it's going up, and it's gonna keep going up. In, in a couple of years here, we will be paying just as much for our recycled product as we are for garbage. It's, it's, it's gonna happen, and, uh, people that, no one pays for recycling, they say, why should I pay for something? Well, I do endure. Well, do endure it. Well, my comment to them is, we wrecked the plant for free, now we gotta pay to fix it.
It used to be all free.
It used to be all free. And that company just went out of business. They sold them out to a company out of Antigua, Minnesota. And because he wasn't charging.
And he wasn't...
No.
When I spoke with you, you also shared that you do, you do donation things for cities and towns?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, just, uh, hospers have just donated $5,000 to their, their fire department. And Boyd, I donated about that much to their fire department, Pringar, they're all... I, I, if I come to the community, I'm gonna buy all my fuel that I use in the community somewhere in town here. Whether it's Casey's or Syngex or whatever. I wanna be involved with your community. I want your fundraisers to follow me. I want the schools to go over this one, this thing, you know? Or if you can, just take from the community or sooner or later, they won't want you around. You have to give back when you can. And I'd like to say, well, I'm buying my truck tires here, but you probably don't have it. Somebody that sells truck tires. And, uh, you know, I've serviced a lot of communities and I, I try to stay involved in all the communities as much as I can. And you can call any of my communities and houses, cities, and that's how I try to stay involved too. But yeah, we pay the landfill.
So we don't get one bill?
Yeah, I think.
That's nicer.
You guys should push your button every month. That sends a bill to all your citizens and you should walk away with, what did they say, $2. And that's all you should have to do, push that button. And phone calls, if you get a complaint, you can take the complaint. You can also give them our number and say, go directly and we'll deal with it, you know? And, um, as far as for routes, you can call any community I've done. And I don't think we're just one route. Ever. I'm trying to think when we have, I don't know if we ever have. I mean, snowstorm, whether we're there the next day or later in the afternoon, you know?
What do you do on holidays?
Usually the next day. Yep, actually, recently, we've been working on holidays. Not, not on Christmas, of course. But I asked my employees, what would you rather do? Make up your double time? You know, after Labor Day or you wanna work on Labor Day? Just we'll work on Labor Day. And Memorial Day is the same way. And this year, we worked on Fourth of July. And if the cities don't mind that we do that, we would, my guys would rather run it out, so...
I think it's good for the residents, 'cause otherwise they forget, they're down there and they don't remember that, oh, that's right, you're not running.
So no, my, my employees are just the same good. You know, like I said, Christmas, of course, we would do it.
Yeah, and they're good about sending out a note too, that I help all the people.
And I use a computer with Facebook and... We put a thing on our website all the time that says what, what routes are. And we have some two girls, well, my daughter and my wife, and another lady in the office every day. Seven o'clock, our office is open. And you will always get through somebody. You have two lines, there's always somebody that will have to the phone. You don't ever call and have no one out of business.
And so about you, thirty-dollar carts?
Yes, and that's the other thing is, I went to buy towders and I, I think it's like $60, $65,000. And then I have to deliver it around. I had on, I have it backwards on there. You need 95 gallons for your recycling and you need 65 for your garbage. That's, that's what you should currently have.
Someone fill in the two parts?
Yes. And what day are you folks picked up Mondays? I think it's Thursdays, Mondays, recycling, Mondays, yes.
I said, how does our recycling?
But you, you would tell us?
Well, I would like to try my best to stay the same. Now, the only thing I would say about Wednesday is, I'm not sure if it would be first and third or second and fourth. That's what I'd have to decide here. I would probably do it the same day as Pringar. And I'm not sure if you guys, Pringar's first and third or second, fourth, you want?
First and third.
That's a little bit different, perhaps? Yeah. But you just know, monitoring the people.
So you do commercials, recycling every Wednesday, right? Or how do you do that?
Well, the commercial recycling we do, I, I'm not sure if we do that Monday. That'd be down on a different chart. So I'm not sure what day that'd begin, but, uh, like now, the commercial, are you picked up once or twice a week, commercially? I think it's gotta be twice a week, for like those, the schools. So I'm, I'm not sure if it'd be Mondays and Thursdays or Tuesdays and Fridays. That I would have to figure out with recycling. Maybe Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday, because it's a different truck and no one will be on.
Then it will always be the same schedule?
Yeah.
Once it's set, it'll be the same schedule?
And another thing I would do is, I'm always looking for higher yield. And if I, I would, I would, you know, try it. Like, I know I was gonna do it, and I would love to have that. And I just hired a fellow from Marcus, but I didn't know, I started to find out, so... When I advertise for health, I would definitely put, you know, pulling paper. If you have any type of paper, newsletter, monthly newsletter or something. But yeah. We would, you know, like, uh, in the fall, we take the parking away from the street parking and we let go of something in the newsletter. To have those returns back off the street as well, you know, through the snowplow, this and that. Different rules, I think, like that.
And you got the contract from, you gotta work with our garbage rates?
I have that contract.
Oh, you've got to go through that, so we have our ads. Okay.
How are your breakdowns? Do you have many breakdowns with your, your equipment?
Like I said, we never miss a route. We have breakdowns. I pick trucks every day. I was, that's what I do most days. I was this morning, I was repairing, but we keep spare. If the nation's third largest company calls you and says they can't run their route because they got a breakdown, there's a serious problem. And the problem is, they aren't buying equipment, you know? Because they feel that...
They won't buy new trucks here.
You're not the first one that has heard that. I mean, I know the town Sergeant Bluff just put their contract up because they were sick of them. Well, they came in and said, do the same price, two dollars. We'll, we'll fix all the problems. The night, the, the day the contract was supposed to be signed, they did give you out. And the mayor was so mad, he called an emergency council meeting and they gave it to the next guy. So this isn't just happening.
I like the idea of local. Yes, you're right. You are local to us.
Yeah, yeah. And you're local. My, my wife's a, a Weber, Southern right here, so... Yeah, so... And like I said, we've been doing Pringar now for, we're on our fifth year. We work with Carol there. Carol helped us get started there, you know, she's gone. And I have reached out to your community prior with administrators you had before and things transpired and we lost touch. But I, I've always wanted to be right in the seat right now and talk to you folks personally. And Mrs. Omtop there, she can, her husband will vouch for you. I've been hauling trash for a long time. He's known me since I was that big coming to the home.
I hope not.
Well, I remember when you started it.
Yeah, in 79.
In Suzy.
No, 74.
In Suzy.
Yeah. Been a long time. He's been gone since 09.
All right. Any other questions for you?
I suppose you'd take care of getting all the carts here and all that fun stuff if we decide to switch and...
Yeah, I'd like to have some kind of a contract, you know, because, you know, I talk to them and I can have carts in time. You know, I, I have to get over on this one now. If we can get carts in time and get them put in place. Is there anything that... Do you folks, uh... Well, you haven't looked at the contracts, like, you're two different towns, have you?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we don't have a contract?
Did you send a proposal of any type or not yet?
Uh, no, not yet. I, I sent her two different ones and I, I said, you guys will look her over and determine which one you like the best, you know? And I would be, I'd be able to pick either one.
Will we have to pull the close all the time and go through?
Well, I can actually, or something that we can see, send it to us.
Like I said, Michelle, we're, really, we're not interested in our customers for three years or five years. We want our customers...
It sounds, all right. Thanks for the information. Michelle will be in touch with you.
Right. Come and see us again.
I apologize, I meant to attach those two.
Are they quite lengthy contracts or...
No, they're very quick.
Okay, so you can use a foot, side note?
Yeah.
Email, yeah, the two decks.
Okay, so we're, um, so we've got a agenda item on here, Michelle. A Town and Country discussion as well, you know, from those two and potentially consider a project. So we could take some action, but we would be willing to see the...
Yeah, and the, the Town and Country, Tisha wasn't, if we, yeah, if we finished, we're doing that contract. She was gone a little bit last week.
Okay, so he sent her the update since she asked for updates.
I sent it for $4, I don't know.
So if we have time, if we can do this, we can. So I mean, now we may have to get that information out for OC sanitation out, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. And I know you did find out from Town and Country that they would do the other type of dumpster thing. Which he says he does, you know? They can do that same thing. We were, us and somebody else were dealing with that, he was...
Oh, you mean as far as contract, directly with the...
Well, right, but she's with us, the girl's billing it. He would do the other way, he would do it in the order of two instead of what we're doing.
I'm still angry, I do it with multiple people.
Yeah, I have nothing against that.
No.
I did not realize that.
He's come to...
Town and Country was out of Texas.
I didn't either.
I had no, I thought he was local.
Always connections. They're all by ways connections.
Yeah, no, I thought he was local.
I did too.
I mean, and they did. So unless they did that, since he's been down, but he's been down for a while.
So they send a thing about to Texas?
Yeah, since she's been in specific goes down.
We have heard of ways management, right?
Ways...
They are ways management.
I was thinking ways management. I, I haven't seen any of that, I was just...
I have seen, yeah, there are just...
You talked about Town and Country?
Yes.
Right. So when you hear his explanation of the commercial use, it's almost like if you're picking that our, our rates seem low. You know, if he's charging the right rates for commercial, the city would be willing to them. Their, our commercial usage is low, which probably means that our residential is suffering a bit or subsided a little bit. For the heavy commercial users. Also, I want to be careful that our commercial users don't get frustrated and have, they have a lot more proparties. Because they're used to paying what they're currently paying.
Right. Well, I'm saying that it's higher than what...
Yeah, and their licenses in town.
But the hot, the plus, like things that, they're local. And we have something that we're doing here with the fire department and stuff that they have doing. You know the other one will not be. So I think you have to look at the overall.
They wait, they wait for the commercial to, like, seeing from what you can?
I don't know. I think they take it. I think it's the same procedure. But they work with the customer themselves, not through the officers.
Oh, okay.
So you don't have to bill anything?
No, not with saying them doing that.
Then, yeah, then our commercial customer can, can talk directly to them and tell them what they need. But there are a lot of different sizes, so...
And, and the, the smaller commercial customers can still have the, the small, oh, yeah. I'm saying we don't, we don't have, like, yeah, but the office, we have a dumpster at the shed.
Right.
Right. So where do you do that? I mean, I would, I understand, but it's a little stuck. You guys understand that there's to set your rates such that it covers the cost plus $2. So that city, you know, for building administration and stuff, look back and, you know, kind of count on making $2 per customer to cover the other types of costs they can incur, that, that, correct? Well, that's kind of what I was hearing, but, yes. That's how I understand, so I'd better cover that.
Admin fee is very common.
You what?
Admin fee is very common.
Oh, okay.
You got, I mean, Michelle, doesn't work, any administration doesn't work so bad.
Okay, so Michelle, you get that information out to the councilors. Anything else on Town and Country that we need to...
I think I can explain the, how, yeah, with the, with the commercial customers, not someone you just start by.
The current status of Town and Country is, you checked with them, they're okay?
I mean, I've gotta extend it another 60 days.
About that, so...
Right.
Two months, okay. So we're good for another 60 days?
60 days from the last meeting, basically.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
All right. Any else on...
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, let's go back up to agenda item number 10. Consider approval, three of the other western mains. We're looking to know there, Michelle.
Um, once, last year, um...
People are in the cactus, right?
Yeah. It's, uh...
I get them eighteen.
Yeah, it looks like this. Um, Brent had bought these domains. So...
So you please our main one.
Yeah, and then bought all the preceding ones. And they're due up for renewal. And I mean, you know, it's, it's up to council or legal, it's, it's necessary to renew those or not.
Have you done anything with it?
No. So what are the tolls? Just to secure that you have Paulina, basically.
Yeah, okay.
How much is it for domain, do you know? I was, I was thinking the total was around $10 for all of us. For all of them or all of these?
I choose around $20 a year. I would say for domain. What's that? What domain name are you protecting?
It's basically so someone can't use this domain, they can't start up a website, yeah.
No, I understand. So there's one of these that we need. We use... We use it usually with...
With the Town and Country.
Yeah. The other are just actually just basically the ones to use them.
Okay.
Is it something we would need to have four of them? I mean, could we do the top one and just one extra? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's just, I guess twenty bucks is cheap too.
Right.
It is.
If we don't need it, then what are we doing with it?
Because this one is out, City of Paulina is out, so it's...
Cleanofficial.com.
We're not going to be losing that one.
No.
Cleanofficial.com, I would say for sure, we're going to lose that one. So maybe this is a city of Paulina Iowa. We need to add to the website because the domain name could have another four, right?
Yeah.
It's available. It's available, yeah.
And I don't know a lot about it, but if, you know, somebody happens to see that cityofpaulina.com would expire and they quickly picked it up, then we can't get that one, but we're having all of it expire.
That one's ours that we're using, so that one you definitely...
You definitely are going to use the top one.
Right, it's just the other three.
Right, there's only three?
Yeah.
So what do you suggest, Michelle? What do you think?
I think that's the only reason we kind of, I don't think it's a big concern, you know.
So we can just renew the one we used, see if these others go.
I agree with that. I know a lot more about computers than what I do. Again, I mean, this is...
There's one, we don't ever let that cityofpaulina.com expire. We got it permanently.
Right. We just have to make sure we renew it in time. Well, it says auto-renews, so we shouldn't have to worry, we shouldn't have to worry.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so we just remove that one?
Okay.
Can we do both of them, Michelle, or are you okay with it? It's going to improve if we do others. Somebody want to just make a motion to renew cityofpaulina.com?
I'll make a motion to renew cityofpaulina.com. Sorry, babe.
Discussion? If it's all, if they're signified, I say aye.
Aye.
Most say aye. We do have to be able to get a dot go. I can say I'm looking for a town on, you know, this dot go. Those are very limited, public entities, but we could get that if we ever wanted to. Let's go there. Item number twelve, Michelle.
Oh, considering we want to change order for Williams and Company, that would be on the pages because they fight themselves. It'd be a resolution. For the rest of...
Yeah. Would you have to change order?
Yeah. So basically what this is, is when we signed the contract in twenty-two, we signed the contract for a specific amount for each fiscal year. But there was a clause in that contract that if there was any major staff turnovers, that that amount could change. There has been major staff turnovers. So what they're saying now is the twenty-three exam will not exceed seventeen thousand two fifty and the twenty-four exam will not exceed seventeen thousand five hundred.
And the reason for change is not just staff turnover, it's because of their time commitment related to that exam.
Right.
To actually bring a lot, double the time.
They have, yeah. Yeah, do you have any other figures that we've just paid lately, Paulus, Williams? Well, we've paid eighty, like, eighty-three hundred for this examination, point three. Okay. So we've got only made over ten.
Sixteen was in ourselves, close to twenty.
Hopefully pretty sure.
Yeah, it was high.
So this is a examination on an audit, correct? Correct. Is it time that we do an audit just because of what Mr. Kepf's letter and that paragraph? And we need that, this would be maybe a year to do it with the changeover that we had?
I don't think he was considering it yet.
No, I don't think he, I'm saying that...
I wouldn't do an audit till the audit they were sent.
Well, I'd be listening.
Well, you called or somebody called at one time down to the state about doing an audit through them and they said, take a mock audit. Well, no, they were actually going to see about doing an audit, but I thought they came back and said, if you feel you're comfortable with your examiners, you should be fine. And we talked about it a couple of times. I think they don't want it.
Williams and Company on a different subject with them. They're also willing, I've been, Justin was out of the office all week last week. They're willing to come in and put some time in and go through our books with us and get everything balanced. Wait, should be the appropriate way instead of going through G-Works and doing these all those hard jobs. Yeah. So...
Please be well worth the money.
Absolutely. And then once we start from a clean slate, you know, give it, you know, a whole for a year, then I think they'll fill out, it wouldn't be that idea.
I mean, just keep that in mind, because an audit will show things that are in the issue.
Right.
Because they're going to kind of sit down with that, be a lot more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So when you, when you use the term in place, what does that?
Well, if we have an audit, we wouldn't have to have this.
Right.
We have to have one or the other.
And when you use the term in place, what does that mean?
What do you mean?
Well, what does that mean? You use the term in place, everything in place, what does that mean?
Everything.
Zeroed in.
Yes. Correct. Everything's accounted for, yeah. Yeah, and I said we'd start with a clean slate.
Well, it'd be a nice deal.
Yeah.
Which at some point we haven't been for many years.
No.
Someone can get that off.
Well, we haven't given an audit since the eighties, not the eighies. It was on the council, probably, I don't know, it was eight years ago or whatever, so... Can they actually do an audit at that time or that time? No, that's when we actually changed over to examination. To, uh, to...
Oh, because you were doing audits.
No, we were doing that.
Okay. I didn't know.
An audit's a probably, it's the eighties.
Oh, I'm wrong.
A city with our budget and our size will not require a lot of space to do an audit, just in the hand, right? But it would be good to get those limitations created. All right, there's entertainment motion, if somebody gets... The person make a motion to approve this resolution.
Like motion to approve the resolution. Be resolved by the city council and City of Paulina to approve and authorize execution of the engagement letter between City of Paulina and Williams.
Just flip the order.
Just flip the page.
Yeah, flip the page.
Just change order. No, with this one, yeah. It's resolved by the city of, by the city council or City of Paulina to approve and authorize proposed change order between City of Paulina and Williams and Company PC for annual examinations.
Okay.
Just go for that.
True.
Whereas turnover within the City of Paulina has a significant additional time when performing procedures for the annual examination required by Dakota Iowa. Whereas the City of Paulina approves of changes listed below. The thirtieth, the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three examination fee would change from seventy-five hundred dollars to an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four examination fee would change from seventy-nine hundred dollars to an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Very, I'm not sure you're ready to vote, this one could be a worst vote, right, Michelle?
Yes.
Steve here?
Aye.
Carol Longco?
Aye.
Nicole Takers?
Aye.
Gina Ral?
Aye.
Danny Workmuster?
Aye. Now item number thirteen is other side of the page. Listen, you don't explain this one before.
Yeah, it seems a little backwards because we got the engagement letter actually over there.
They should write themselves up for this.
Yes. Give us some money back. Yeah. And you did it backwards. And actually, when I put this in on the agenda and Marlon looked at the agenda, he says, don't you mean the twenty-four? And I go, nope, this is the twenty-three. Actually, when I...
So are we doing one of these soon for twenty-four?
Yes, because they actually would like to get started with the next examination rather than starting some of it. Yep.
Well, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's all given, yeah.
So I entertain a motion for approval of this resolution?
I'll present, being resolved by the city council of City of Paulina Iowa to approve and authorize the execution of the engagement letter between City of Paulina and Williams and Company PC to perform annual examination for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do you make a motion to that second? Any discussion?
Here's a formal here, item?
Yeah. Uh, Danny Workmuster?
Yes.
Gina Ral?
Yes.
Nicole Takers?
Aye.
Carol Longco?
Yes.
Steve here?
Aye.
We have to have proof of...
Sorry.
Way back.
All right, item number fifteen. Decide future plans for the old bank building. From our plan meeting.
Would you ever get a hold of that guy from the Mars? I mean, a few, how you need to look at on something like this? That door along or whatever we're talking about?
No.
Okay. Is that how maybe you should post? If there was something, you know. Yeah, and when I talked to Kiana and I mentioned she had, yeah, this is it. And so I wasn't going to print all this out and put it in your packet. No, if you guys want to take a look at it, something that probably Kelly or somebody wanted to...
And that's holistic, with her regional national.
She had done nothing, yeah, what I, you said. Does that cost anything to do that then, or is that... I think we just tell them, you know, if it's costly, we're putting them on the low or not. I don't even know, does it?
I assume so, I would think so.
I would think it has to. Because, you know, I don't know.
True. Do you have a church?
I don't know. She's with the county.
So I think it's the council's intention to do something with bank building, I get by doing something, you know, get it on the market and see if they can get a business owner or something done.
What's the thoughts?
So maybe, Michelle, you quit for the next meeting, check with Donna for sure, we fill out that information and then get some information on who else would want to rest here.
Yeah. Could be a part of a realtor, like, trying to see bankruptcy or...
But you should just, just talk to some people.
Yeah, I mean, that's good.
That's our...
Yeah, I mean, that's good. Talk to her. And maybe that guy from the Mars, he just be a bit of a, or maybe he just do boxes, maybe he is not actually a realtor. That's what I was thinking of.
I'd start with Kiana and then somebody local.
You have to talk to, you know, just you have to talk to the local people as well.
He's sitting there for a while. What can I give this thing for? Different price to it. That's all they got, it's pretty much.
Get some ideas from the, I'm sure Kiana has some. Cities are going to be looking more for building space and bringing business into town. So she brought us some ideas on how to put that in, get some of the things to go with it. So that would be enough, coming, you and Michelle listen both on that. But everybody's on board with that, just so she... Consider plans for pocket park. Pushes of potential sale.
I can, I can, I could start with, with, um, potential sale. I talked to Eric at the hardware store. He would still be interested in, in the purchase of that property. My recommendation would be, and I don't know how we can do this, and I don't know how the rest of the council feel about it, but my recommendation would be that if we could sell it to him for a dollar, just to transfer, just to make the transaction and get it transferred into his name, then he's property owner, if you do something with that, and we have tax revenue on that, it could be some benefits to both parties doing that. Other cities have done it, I own the city of Sutherland, has done that with some, uh, some businesses over there to get them into a building or into ownership of property.
Are we going to offer it to anybody else or just Eric or...
I am.
I almost feel like you have to offer it to other people as well, that'll do.
I do too. You know, anybody you can.
Well, do we, I mean, you would have, you would have to, is it?
Maybe you have to since, for the city property, you have to.
And I feel like it should be for not just a dollar, I feel like it should be a little bit more than that. Just because, yes, I know we'll get the tax benefit and everything, but what would be different than his product in front of his store, on the side of his store compared to where, you know, the, the pocket park is now? I just feel like we need to ask for something, it doesn't have to be like what the city was asking, because what was six thousand a lot? And there was three, three lots?
Well, we lived out with fields and also some for two lots.
Okay.
So they paid well.
Okay. I just remember hearing six thousand, so, you know, eighteen thousand for that little lot right there is...
Not three lots.
It is three lots.
You're kidding.
Yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm. It's one in the front and then two in the back.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. I haven't thought of that. Bye, you bye.
Well, and he, I mean, he can't, what's, what's... The problem he has is he has product on the sidewalk. You really can't expand onto the sidewalk, he's not supposed to. He can't expand to the east very much because he only has that little amount between the, um, I clinic and his property. There is an health shake behind that, behind the I clinic a little bit. That's his property, but not anything that he could do on his business on. So, you know, I think it would be very beneficial to that business owner to own that, to own that property. So that's...
Maybe something we have to reach out to Tisha.
Reach out to Tisha, say...
But at the end of the day, I think you gotta just offer it to everybody. And at the end of the day, I think you guys make this decision on where that property goes to.
Yeah, it's just like selling a vehicle, whenever you gotta make notice. And then at this certain time or place, you have to have your bids submitted or have an open option of where it would go and then...
Because maybe someone...
Where the I dealer is and gets the property.
Well, I don't...
You can take the high bid. You can be able to take it as long as you want.
I don't think we, we've had that property for years. I don't think we want to get into taking bids or any of that.
No, that's a process you gotta go through.
I, I don't know, it's something we need to talk to Tisha about. I don't know.
Maybe we'll find out what our rules are first.
Yeah, so when the Congress, so, so adjacent property to current businesses for a, how, most favorite price or market price or something like that. But yeah, let's find out how, how they did those. That's what we had to do when we sold, uh, our buyers or anything.
Oh, mm-hmm.
We had to do all this process and then we had just a little sale during the office which went to, to people interested. Sure, I know we need to see a class that should have...
Yeah, I don't know how that works, so...
With that process, do you have to take the highest bidder? You have to.
Well, it should be sealed, right?
Well, but do you have to take bids? Because we have, we have the Bush property, we put a price on it. We, if somebody wants to buy it and offers our asking price, they get the property. If there's two... If there's two people that are offering our asking price for that property, we have to choose between one of the two, sell whoever wants to sell to. Wouldn't be any different than that, if it's a four thousand dollar sale or a dollar sale. If we put it up for a dollar, that we want that property, want to sell the property for a dollar and we have three people involved in that that wanna buy it, we just decide who we want to sell to.
Okay, then I knew what that's probably.
Let's do it together.
So that's something that we have to talk to Tisha about and find out.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll find a legal process and.
Yep, and then bring it back on.
I mean, that's just, that's just was my discussion with Eric and.
I'd love to see him expand too, I think he has a lot of great things, but we also have to be open minded.
Yeah, if that doesn't work.
He's gotta go off to everybody. And I know he's the one that first came to us. Find out legally first where we're at. Welcome there.
Great, thank you.
So are we gonna remove the bushes then?
I'd say, I mean, if we're wanting to sell it, I'd wait though, because.
They might want.
Yeah, well, then it could be there, it's just at this point, it's the aesthetic, it looks horrible. But if someone were going to be selling it here soon, then that could be that potential buyer's problem then.
In the meantime, we don't want it to look horrible, it's city owned property.
But we need to get someone to go up there and.
Is there, is there anything that we should be maintaining short of removing the bushes?
Yeah, so I, I want to say there's some, there's some sapling trees that grew up behind the bushes, behind the fence. There's some extra stray grass and weeds that could be cleaned up. We could really clean that up between the bushes and it would probably look good, yeah.
And we did that last fall. We cut them down because again, there was so much stuff, I know that I'm talking about the chamber. And it looks good, but then, you know, you have. Yeah.
You have to be bad.
Well, if somebody's interested in going and ripping it up a little bit, I think that's fine, I don't know if it's been moved before, I don't know if you would operate for sale. Item number seventeen, consider removal of sludge from city with.
We can get an actual estimate for cell one.
We got an actual estimate yet?
In the claims that were approved, that was Brian, Brian Feltman has revealed, um, two.
Same selection, two of us.
Oh, he got your motion, right? Yeah, it was like fifteen hundred.
Did you see? Fifteen fifty, it's the last one on the.
So if you add that, that's three down and that's like this.
So time, you know, there's just a lot of buildup from where it transfers from one to two. By the pipe there, so you just have to clean that up.
I may have some track. Four, maybe the one. It was three of them.
That's okay, go ahead.
What's cell three of?
Two and, two and three are, I mean, they have sludge in them, but they're not terrible. But there is uh bugs and whatnot, you can treat that stuff with, and I think that would work good for those two cells to get those down.
Two and three.
Two to three. They'd take, I mean, it'll take a few years to get it to where it should be, but it would get there, but it's, they're not terrible. One is not a bug.
That's a lot more.
And I can talk to, um, Roush, I believe they did prim guards, and they, I think it was four hundred thousand dollars just to get the sludge removed that wasn't giving it to them or anything, so.
So what, where are we gonna be able to get an estimate from them for us in the house?
I'm sure this week.
Okay.
Will that be from Danny construction now?
Well, how do they clean that then? Do you have one of those excavators with the long arm?
You get an excavator and they slurry it and pump it out.
Oh, okay. We gotta see, can we, can we let that hill out there, can we let the sludge, let the sludge, if anybody dry that place, they wouldn't use that, right?
We could, yeah, we'd have to put some berms up to keep it from going to Mill Creek and.
Otherwise, you can spread it or not, in a field.
Yeah, but there, that price includes the spread, and I did talk to Mark Lanning and Scott, who's got, Lanning right there, we're both will be able to get spread on their land. So we don't have to go too far with it.
So we don't really like a ballpark number yet, right? And yeah, workshop, I heard a hundred fifty, premier was four hundred.
I think, yeah. I think the hundred fifty thousand is higher where it's gonna be at.
That's okay. And that's just not the one topic.
Let's just sell them because in four and five, there's already worries about that there, probably will last two pounds. There's, those two pounds are fine.
What was the change order that you were doing there? We had time back after that. Everybody like that.
We talked about it, it's not good. Can you, can you kind of say then? That was installing a blower that we already have.
What was it? Stop doing what the party did. The name is a change of the name.
Yeah, it wasn't in the original plans, I guess it should have been, I missed that, I guess, and.
She and her agent here, Ben, and you have part of that?
Yeah.
Well, that's getting the building out now.
Yeah, but exactly. Change of the ground. Something we would have asked for a couple more items. I've heard that you also are the one that said they should have done the switch here with two different contractors too. So I don't know, you must have a little EGR in you.
Okay, so we have, we consider removal of sludge in the city, but we don't have estimates, we can't act on, you know, but what does that do to the project? Issues that.
That slow it down or?
I mean, if they're gonna slurry it out, they can put the aeration in. The last I talked to Blake was the plan was to leave the aeration out of cell one until they get the sludge out and they install the aeration in cell one. Which would be this fall.
Oh, so they might want to get now.
They'll get two and three done and we'll have aeration in two and three.
So we're not looking at months, we're looking a couple months, tiny under.
Yeah, and to, to actually install the aeration part of it, they gotta look, all the hard stuff done, so.
So we can't talk about this at this meeting.
Okay. So you'll get us quotes from them.
Right. So this bitch, should we say something back to me there about? They're not real happy with what you went out to me.
I've been talking to you.
It wasn't, so, because we had bought the units, right? And then were we originally thinking about putting in ourselves, but.
It seems like a, like a bidding bid, like I have maybe forty thousand dollars for that piece. So I see what we do. Maybe that's too high, maybe it's. I'd like to know what it costs, what, what is it about those things that cost forty thousand dollars to install?
Is that the point where you have to go up there?
Okay, next move. Um, agenda item number eighteen, consider new line for East Rose Station. Do we have good estimate, is there information?
I just verbalized one of the thirty-five and then um.
Thirty-five plus T C A.
T C A for just the, we usually just get charged, so, do we actually get less money? Or we get a thousand dollars? We just pay the wages of the guys that are here working.
Your funding, do we have ceiling?
I mean, we'd have to find another T C A when they are coming to do it, but we can still do it.
We have the pipe and everything and stuff.
Well, we'd have, yeah, we have a pipe by hand.
So thirty-five thousand plus later, can we get an estimate on that later? I mean, so what is it, what's the true install possibility for us?
I couldn't see if they could know that. I mean, there's, oh, I, I can talk to DJ and get a better estimate on that, I guess.
But the council would be against ones for, from yours or of ours or.
Okay, no, for sure.
Right.
Yeah, it wasn't anything or whatever.
I guess my concern is whether you carry, this wasn't eligible, right? So we had room to do that, it's pretty early in this year.
Yeah, I mean, it can work, so. It doesn't have to be done right now. Could you do it in the, or, could you look at it in the spring and see where we're at? Budget wide, see how much money, you know?
You want to be clear, you can ask DJ, what are you gonna do regardless of that labor?
That's the.
Yeah. And a little further down the road. Payson was not the only one that was affected with.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I feel like we're somewhat in the rainy season, I think, so.
Item number nineteen, Michelle, updating the structural for where you should at City Hall?
Yeah, um, Michael back in and did some looking and a little bit of fixing and he's pretty confident we can figure out where the water was coming in above the door and he's gonna do some more work around the bottom of the windows. And then figured out what was coming in on the.
He did hear that, just the trip part of the door, it just wouldn't seal or?
I did some gutter issues back there.
Yeah, I would account, the gutter was.
So good.
Yeah, and that was the subprime issue over here was this gutter too, we said it probably been plugged like that for years. Probably. Well, but I wonder what the door was, because that's been traveling.
Or something lifted up on the, when the work came down, that it was, there was no way the water wouldn't flow back into the building, but then it passed and that down.
So we get another big rain after.
Well, so didn't you find any structure issues like?
Um, as far as structural stuff, you didn't, you really didn't get into it then or or?
You didn't find some openings in there that were two dollars, and if there was any heavy rains that would let in, so we, we flashed that a bit differently than any ones and.
He did do some stuff, you got to work on it maybe, he did something on this side too.
Yeah, well, gutters disposed into that PVC pipe that has raised itself, it's been frosty, up above the ground. That, that was rated high enough that the gutters were jammed into the bottom of that, basically plugging off the bottom of the gutters. Sometimes when we have heavy rain, it couldn't probably flow fast enough. And depends how much it would build up, the, the downspouts, the silvers that go over the gutters and all those issues out there, so. It is somewhat, but I'm not sure exactly.
So do you guys ever clean gutters and stuff or not, I mean, you knew that?
You do.
Okay, from yearly or split stone faces?
Probably true.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot, and there, there was a piece of gutter here that, you know, came, came down curved like this, and the trunk like this was full of dirt and gravel and stuff there. Full, fully, a hundred percent.
So much for the fixes and hopefully it should be.
Right.
And Kelly will put that on another list. Which guy looks to be the gutter guy?
The honeydew one?
Yeah, that honeydew one. Well, I think that sounds good, at least I'm happy, I'm hopefully somebody can see quicker than now, yes.
All right, again, have a work session, consider engineering at Broadway Maple Street Lots for potential housing development. And so we have done that.
I think we should get with the development committee and just talk about some, just brainstorm. Who's on that? The development committee, Marty, Cody Nelson.
Oh, Clayton.
Oh, you're thinking that? Clayton Grument, that one, yes, sorry, I was gonna get you guys here. Joel Gane, Tisha Harberson, Kent House, Jimmy Altman and Dean Toddbaum. Is on that?
And then our finance and energy development, which is also lots and then for sales.
It's.
Okay, so I'm here next step through this.
And on that, on the subject of that Broadway Maple Street, I did get an estimate from Brian Feltman on leveling that dirt. So I'm, yeah, he says it's an estimate, but he's, he's hoping to get it in lower than that. And that's four thousand.
Four thousand.
That's a level of dirt. Yeah, that, that's, that doesn't, he says, yeah, remove some concrete rather too. Do you speak your, um, twenty hours of the dozer and seven, seven and a half hours of schedule?
And will that compact the property so that we have to make?
The dozer will compact it some time, but, yeah. And then it's ready to sell it next week.
Probably not.
Either eight.
It's gonna get pretty deep, pretty quick, I don't know if I feel it's. There's a degree enough to feel if you let it shoot.
Um, I told him just to worry about the west half for sure, that's where it needs to be.
So basically the city open half, open Maple to Hartford.
I don't think there's enough to do the whole.
But as far as compassion, it's what I'm talking about, the people, the dirt, the iron is the impacts or.
Feel movement. But if you move it, move foot at a time and, you know, compact that and, yeah.
So do you, does council want to approve that? Do we have, do we have four thousand in the budget that we could just do?
Yeah, we could do it, they, um, yeah. Is this for Feltman? Yeah, it's for Feltman.
Do we need to be in a rush to you?
I was gonna say, can we wait till we talk to somebody what we're looking at maybe?
I mean, at the end of the day, you're gonna have to start having a whole bunch of weeds and all those, parts are stopped growing, there's gonna be a grass plant.
If you go to Brian's dirt pile across from right, weeds, it's not until it starts taking some dirt out, and you couldn't tell it was a dirt pile because it was so full of weeds.
You're worried we need to get it done regardless, whether it's this month or next month or. Well, people are using it as a dirt bike track, so you don't mind those issues, so. And then we have some people dumping stuff down there too, I acknowledge.
Oh my gosh, the trash and?
Old bricks and concrete and stuff.
Ooh, no.
On our part or the?
Yes.
Plan approval?
Looking for music?
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know who's part of this, but, yeah, it's not, that's not one, it's not a dumping ground.
No, it's not. We need to sign up?
No, we just need to get the dirt leveled off.
Yeah, we agree.
Still can dump.
Get it looking good and reseed it, put grass in it again and.
I would hope that would stop it.
Don't stop it.
So if we have a room in the budget there, we can sell it for four thousand dollars.
I do not, I think we used to. Because we're gonna have more people complaining about how it looks, and the weed's growing and.
We'll get down, we'll do it again or something.
Well, you get too many reasons that you can't get compassion here.
You want a motion for that, just to make it official?
I mean, you sure can, I mean, for four thousand dollars, whether it's on or not.
I'll make a motion to approve Brian to do the level off the dirt on the Maple Broadway section for the four thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Any discretion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say aye. All right. Item number twenty-one, curb garbage rates, and really our next four items, agenda items are, the council's already approved rates. We just had, had approved the resolutions that those rates are in. And we could potentially get a change on what we're doing with that amount of garbage. Our ordinance currently calls for commercial and residential garbage.
Our ordinance currently calls for commercial and residential garbage that's out here in the city. That will change potentially through your policy sanitation, or we could also change to a common country. So I think you have a couple of different orderings, is that correct?
Are you gonna keep the rates last meeting?
Two meetings at a time.
And we didn't, we didn't approve on the last meeting because.
We didn't approve the resolutions.
Yeah, we saw it here somewhere.
So see, the resolutions are.
Thirty-two, pick thirty-two.
Thirty-two, thirty-four. So the first one would be wherever things stuff in the city. Thirty-four is.
I mean, thirty-four should say for each resident or commercial customer using it in the park.
And for each residents using or.
For each resident. Both commercial and commercial. And I don't know, is this something that we're on? Who is that?
Wait, wait up there.
Let's just do that. We have the rates. To take with this order.
Well, we, we.
Then we decide what we're gonna do for all of them.
We could do that. Or we could, or you could approve the first one where it would be.
Where we're at now.
It covers both commercial and residential. And then we can get that in place and then we can always amend that ordinance or allow it to contract directly. So page thirty-two would be the one that would be consistent with what our arbitrary discussion was, which is rates. So I entertain a motion for approval of those on page thirty-two.
I'm gonna reduce the resolution. It is all by the, by the Council of the City of Palina, Iowa, to approve an amendment to the garbage rates affecting what's published for the City of Palina, Iowa. I'll second that.
And that's page thirty-two, your referral should be.
Yes, page thirty-two, the resolve. Yep.
So we have a motion and a second. End of discussion.
I'll give a comment. And I, I hope I got the numbers right here, but I went back to Marlon's sheet that he had, uh, kind of, which was very nice. But we're proposing to raise the utility rates about thirty-five thousand through, also, boy, total, in total. And that's at the bottom of the sheet, so I don't have. And of course, that equates into four hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six dollars here, but and I, I have a concern with that, but the homeowners now are facing the increase of the revenue here in the city, but there's, uh, Black Hills, as I mentioned. Many times it's increasing rates as well. Plus, with the, with the school, they estimate about a hundred dollars. I don't know how tax year or full year. So with some of our seasoned citizens in their budgets, it's maybe pretty hard to keep on, so we just, we have to be, people are ears open, be aware. And that they need to be something different, we don't have to give them something different. You know, even our household, uh, thirty-five dollars, you know, we're, I don't have utilities, I'm getting robbed. But I just wanted to be aware that for thirty-five dollars a month, it's a big, it's a big. And I'll say. By the way, I'll be, before you know it, I'm.
No.
All right, any discussion or questions? Here again, two way votes, child role call.
Any workmaster?
No.
Gina Brown?
Yes.
Nicole Jacobs?
Yes.
Carol Hong Kong?
Yes.
Steve Harry?
Aye.
And in passing of that resolution also, it's considered the first meeting. The second reading will be next meeting. At which time, you know, we go, the, the third reading, that followed that unless we waive the third reading at the next meeting. Just so that be clear, people can comment at those readings, yeah. You know, I'm making sure, probably that public forum of those next meetings, I can't remember, except that agenda.
I mean, at this point in time, if, if the council wanted to, it would also have this one considered the first reading, and waive the second, third. Probably not recommended with, with an ordinance rate change, so.
All right, next agenda item, number twenty-two, sewer rates.
Page thirty-six.
Okay, we're taking a motion of the resolution on page thirty-six. Again, council already discussed, been debating to approve the rates. And you really don't care about the changes with the ordinance wording, other than, other than those rates within the ordinance. So would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll introduce the resolution. It is all by the Council of the City of Palina, Iowa, to approve an amendment to the sewer rates affected when published for the City of Palina, Iowa.
Motion will be seconded.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Harry, you show the role call.
Steve Harry?
Aye.
Carol Wong Kong?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Gina Brown?
Aye.
Any workmaster?
Four ayes, one no, motion passes. Can this be considered, that's in the ordinance amendment, and first reading. Electric rates. And number twenty-four. Page thirty-eight. Entertaining the motion.
Okay. If I talk too much, I'm gonna start coughing, so. It is all by the Council of the City of Palina, Iowa, to approve an amendment to the electric rates affected when published for the City of Palina, Iowa.
The motion made by Gene will be seconded.
I'll second, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Harry, you roll for vote, Michelle.
Nicole Jacobs?
Yes.
Gina Brown?
Yes.
Carol Wong Kong?
Yes.
Steve Harry?
Pardon me.
Any workmaster?
So we have three on this two days. Yep, we have three, two on this one, so that resolution, motion passing is considered the first reading. Item number twenty-four, water rates.
I'm going for a before. It is all by the Council of the City of Palina, Iowa, to approve an amendment to the water rates affected when published for the City of Palina, Iowa.
The motion will be seconded.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Harry, you roll for vote, please, Michelle.
Steve Harry?
Aye.
Carol Wong Kong?
Aye.
Nicole Jacobs?
Aye.
Gina Brown?
Uh.
Any workmaster?
Aye.
I think that motion passes and it's considered the first reading of that water rate on the town. Okay. Item number forty-five, reports, Kelly and Michelle.
Most have been working around the school or getting pretty close to being permanent with the electric, so.
Except they're ready to forward football field parking lot, putting forms in today.
Michelle is here today, they're starting on the substitution, so, um, switch gear.
That'll be the building and something else.
They got the, where the building, the ones being repainted.
But they're already with the building and something else, right, or? Which is what?
What's that?
Well, what else are they responsible for?
They're responsible for the building, installation of the switch gear.
That'll be the exact.
Yep.
Have they got room with all the junk left there? I haven't looked, but. And where the chamber has, um, their tables and chairs, is that going to be affected at all?
Michelle, anything else?
Um, I, I'm hoping that you're back from when I was accompanied and to have the, have them here to talk about the exams the next city council meeting. And Brian Feltman, I talked to him today, and he said they've had about thirty private planes over the past thirty days. And he said there's eight to ten spray planes that run per day for plane, so eight to ten, per plane, eight to ten times in and out of the airport per day.
So two planes, eight, probably trips, sorties each.
Eight, yeah, yep.
And thirty people, otherwise that one.
Thirty private, private, that's thirty days.
Oh, that's amazing. That's good to know. Ask them if you keep it up for a couple months or years. I mean, summer should be better, but.
There's actually three spare ones.
Only three?
Nick and Ed has one and Hank's state.
Oh, okay. So I can say there's two, the, the first spare plane, are they independent of Hank's state that they're working with Hank's?
No, that plane, that plane is spraying strictly for Nicholson and I'm not. And there are no connection with brothers.
So do we have a contribution agreement with, with Nicholson and his group on a parade for spray?
Yeah, one.
Yeah.
They have called during the thing, did you know they were there? Okay, here's, I saw someone out there the other day, but, but the Nick and Ed someone.
Did you check?
Well, I heard from my grandson because he's out here helping with Nick and Ed's sprayers, so.
Must have loved Brian, you, Michelle, feeling.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Just want to mention, Kiana Johnson, Brian County Development, pulled together a meeting last Friday on closure of Mercy Medical Hospital in Palina. They have probably twenty plus people in attendance, some from Mercy that are losing jobs. With one person there from Sanford, so he was very knowledgeable on how things were to be given. So basically, according to the CEO, who was not there, but can, I talked to them before, to him before the meeting. He said they started the process of reviewing disclosure in twenty twenty-two. The foundation, the hospital foundation people were totally shocked by this because they have been, been told over the last couple of years that everything's fine. We're, we're committed to the area, not closing anything. And so there were some pretty surprised, frustrated, and frankly upset, you know, foundation people because they made it clear that they felt a bit misled, you know, the world was born on. Hospital does need some new updates, boiler and electric and things like that. They're evaluating lab and X-ray services because they're gonna keep the clinic open to Prindar. Lab and X-ray services aren't in plenty here in the hospital, hospital's for sale, probably have to find a buyer. So, you know, basically, I think Prindar, you know, is gonna focus on how do they negotiate with them to not leave behind a big building like that, that nobody's gonna love or rent to. Mercy Medical, I, I would not be around here, the foundation has some money. Because there was some fundraising that was happening in the past to build a new hospital potentially. Somewhere in, maybe after two million dollars plus, evidently Mercy's gone through the process to be able to take that money with them, you know, person who, you know, was raised to build a hospital. So a lot of, you know, the gallows, Bill, Bill Clinker was there, you know, from insurance, can't arrest a Prindar party, but also was aware of some of that. Um, so, um, Jim and Corinne Johnson were there, they owned the Southern Clinic Building that they built just before COVID hit. He said, he read, it was not liberty, he told me, he said he's had some inquiries about potential other medical providers that might relocate in Southern. Palina, you know, actually, they looked at that Cleveland city, and they said, you probably got the best side of this deal because you still have a clinic, because you had two, and you still have one, you'd narrow it out. Um, but we have the building. The Friday that this, the notice came out, I got a call from, somebody from, that was working on, with the little hospitals from Mercy Medical. And letting me know that they had, they had met with employees and they were gonna do the news release at three in the afternoon, they left three in the mail just before three o'clock. And by that time, the word was out from the employees, you know, because those meetings have happened by late morning. Um, I reminded him that we, that they're leasing that building from the City of Palina, he was not aware of that, so he said he was gonna check into that to determine what's gonna happen there. One of the, one of the people that was at that meeting was Mark Holst, originally from Palina, his dad was high school principal back in the day, here in, at Palina. Um, he runs some physical therapy clinics out of hospitals, pretty much. So, I was sitting there, and he's looking for a place to relocate from, bring their hospital, that we could probably make him a heck of a deal on a, a building, a building that's gonna be available here in Palina. So Kiana after the meeting said that was really good to find that scene, she doesn't know what they're gonna decide to do. Martin is also, unfortunately, in service, and they don't know what he's gonna do with it, right? So, lot, lot of buzz around that, but just a quick update on, on that. Where they really, you know, came out of the media is, is they're putting together a smaller group of people, and they told me some people that were there, like six or seven people, to work directly with Mercy to focus on what, to what they didn't get Mercy to do and not leave behind the hospital. I, if you're gonna take the foundation money, maybe you should tear down the hospital or sell, like, keep there around, develop and things like that. But, well, yeah, to be decided, nothing was decided, and it was just, and, and the rest didn't mean with those people that were really directly impacted, a lot of those people with their jobs, so.
Is the foundation, so that you'll be with Mercy, will you?
As far as I know, it is, um, but evidently Mercy closed other hospitals, et cetera, places eight or ten years ago. And they did the same thing, they were able to work the legal system and hold the foundation money into them. So that seems to be what they've done there as well, so. Bill Clinker was gonna check into that on behalf of, for, or anything like that, so.
So there's a lot of that depending on what they're asking us to say.
Right. So the, the bank presidents were, I should say presidents, branch managers, were there from Pringar, Jim Johnson, senior from Southern, Marty Weber is there from Paulina, I don't think I've ever seen one actually, but. Marty is also on, um, I think he was on the foundation board for a while, and was also on the Bryan County Development Board with Kiana, and that group. And Marty, when, when the foundation talked, was, I mean, people were saying, it's like, listen, should we don't lose that money, we gotta figure out where to keep it, Marty's kind of like, listen, it's like, basically, what he's heard, with where it's at, that money's gone. Now it's just a matter of, well, should we get them to agree to do with it before they leave town? So, that's what I have for. Um, council comments, anything else of note?
Um, we have a. The, uh, retention time's out here.
Oh, yeah.
Can we spray that with something that will?
Those are ready.
It's, it's great.
It's great.
We just sprayed it.
I'll just take it.
I'll just spray it, I remember calling last week, every week.
We call that, okay. I mean, there's a paracord that kills the ground for ten years.
You're proud of that, that's what you can.
Just wondering, okay, thank you.
Anything else, council? Police, the council, otherwise departments, police hired, just fired. And you, you have anything, Ryan?
Brian Felman has all, a major concrete tore up a lot, moving forward.
And all the way, so.
And all the way. So, there's one set of cleanup yet to do there.
Yeah. What you got there, too?
He did?
Yeah. So, huge transformer that we don't need, it's up there. Yeah, moving forward, um, waiting on some engineering reports to see if we can keep moving forward, um, adjusting our grade there. I guess my only comment is, I'm a little breezy soon about moving forward, because we sat here last week for almost two hours, and we've done nothing about this, from that evening. That we said we're doing for. Every time we do that, it puts off two more weeks, and two more weeks.
Part, part of that was, we had pretty poor reading already for the, so, 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 I get it, yeah.
Understand that, but we can't get the cart in turn of the horse, but at the same time, the horse needs a whip every now and then to keep moving.
When you're in, for the long way to, to put on the right steps.
I, I don't know when I'm supposed to talk and not supposed to talk, and we, so, I keep a lot to myself. But I mean, yeah.
As far as, you know, it would be, what would be helpful is to, to make sure we have your direction in putting the agendas together, you know, with the information that the council needs, and that you need them to know, to get a prior means.
And I guess lastly, I probably should have brought this up in, in the public forum. Worked for Brad for over ten years in Orange City. When I worked over there, excellent guy over there. On the truck, truck show, worked with him the last year that we had it out there, and he donated just about everything there, so. Very, very good to work with, and I've never seen any lack of response. That might be something.
Matt, anything?
No, we don't like that.
Okay. Page sixty-six. Just to make a walk in the park.
I'm with her.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Page seventy-five.